Man, I can smell the fresh carpet.
Okay, we're after four o'clock. We got four present and one online. Anybody else online? Just we got rich. Okay. And I think we'll have the others joining us shortly, but welcome to the 4pm joint work session for the Augen City Council and the redevelopment agency. We have here in the room, council member Blair, council member Chuburka, council member Graff and myself, and online we have council member Hire and walking through the door, we have Vice Chair White. And hopefully we'll be joined by council member Meyer shortly. We'll begin with quick, a quick review of the special city council meeting at six and the redevelopment agency meeting agenda review. So we have a couple of acknowledgements that we'll, we'll recognise and and we have community engagement and opportunity commission joining us on one of those and then I'll probably do the other. And then we've got some minutes to approve. We have a recognition council member Blair will read the honorary mayor of Christmas Village. And then we have a consent item for Ogden City Arts Committee appointments. Then we have a report from planning commission on a proposed rezone at 139 North Wall Avenue. And a report from administration for the proposed interlocal agreement post closure care permit at the nine ten West 21st Street location and Justin Anderson will be here to present on that. Any comments or questions on the agenda? Do we need to go over on that? All right. And then with the redevelopment agency, we've got some minutes there. And then we'll consider, we'll consider a journey into closed session. And for those following along at home or here in the room, we, our work session agenda, we're gonna try and pair a couple of items. We have it broken down by city council items and redevelopment agency items. And for those presenting on those, a couple of those items, we're gonna try and take those together. So Sarah and Jared on, on those two items. So what, when we get to that, we'll, we'll make sure everyone knows what we're doing. Hopefully. We'll invite first Kathy Fuentes up to give us a proposed fiscal year 2025 annual action plan and amendment. And welcome.
Hi, everyone.
If you'll just hit on your microphone there.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kathy Fuentes, Senior Community Development Coordinator, and I'm here with Jeremy Smith. Thank you for your time to consider our annual action plan for fiscal year 25 amendment number one. Today we'll do a quick review of the five-year consolidated plan, what the annual action plan is, and then the proposed annual action plan fiscal year 25 amendment number one. And then the proposed Onanagden program guideline changes, changes. So the five-year consolidated plan is the mechanism in which the city receives entitlement funding for two HUD grants, the Community Development Block Grant and the Home Grant. The conplan is also a strategic planning tool which helps us to prioritize housing, community development, and economic development needs for the city. It outlines what the city plans to do with HUD funds for the five-year period, and it requires citizen participation. And it's important to know that if it's not specified in the conplan, then HUD funds cannot fund the activity. But an amendment can be used to change, significantly change a program beneficiaries budgets or to add or delete a program. The annual action plan is the implementation plan of the five-year plan. So each year we adopt an annual action plan. It determines the programs and projects that will be funded with HUD funds for that year. It details the budget and the goals for the year, and it also requires citizen participation. We have a 30-day public comment period, and then CED has a citizen advisory committee that reviews our plans and our amendments. So the purpose of annual action plan fiscal year 2025 amendment number one is funding allocation changes, updating our carryover funds for the year from estimates to actual dollar amounts, updating our program income estimates for the year, and then the one program changes that Onanagden proposed to increase the Onanagden budget to 500,000 of home funds and 100,000 a home match, and increase our goals from 25 to 50 down payment assistance for the year, loans for the year. Here's a little snippet of our budget changes for the year, how it looks. Onanagden will increase by $250,000 to be a $600,000 budget, 500,000 home, 100,000 home match. The goals will change from 25 to 50 down payment assistance for the year. No change to emergency home repair and our community development housing organization. This is a set aside fund that is required by HUD. It is set aside for a nonprofit. We use Utah Nonprofit Housing Corp. It's increasing by $73,451 for a budget of 204,170. Our goal is to complete one project every other year with our CHODO partner. Then the quality neighborhoods HUD-funded portion of the quality neighborhoods will decrease by $391,324. And our goal is to complete five home renovations for the year with our HUD funds. Then we have the help, which is non-federal funds, will increase by $561,204. And our goal is to complete 30 home repair loans to homeowners for the year. And then our home ARP program, which is the tenant-based rental assistance, will increase by $27,404. And our goal is to assist 15 homeless persons. That's 15 per year for five years with tenant-based rental assistance. And then we have our regular CDBG home and home ARP admin, which is determined by a formula, and are, it will increase by $157,145. And that's for program administration. So this is for the community development programs. And for the business development program, there are no changes except the carryover for CDBG CV, which was the CARES Act money specifically set aside for COVID pandemic, will decrease by $3,780. So none of the goals are changing for business development. So the amendment number one proposes to increase the Onanagden budget to 6,000, increase the goals to 50. Just to give you an idea where we're at right now, the Onanagden program for this year, as of today, we have 14 low mod income home buyers who received $10,000 down payment assistance loans, and two teachers received 15,000 down payment assistant loans. So as of the end of, as of today, we have $181,253 of expenditures for Onanagden.
Just a quick question before you move on. So I guess I'm not sure. So what does that, like if you had $10,000, you would have to, I'm just trying to think, they'd have to have 80/20. Is that kind of still as a part of a down payment piece?
So it's down payment assistance. It doesn't cover an entire down payment that would get them out of things like mortgage insurance. That's typically what your, the 80/20 would allow you to do. If you have enough down payment, then you don't have to pay mortgage insurance on that. This isn't, this isn't for that. This is just to help with closing costs and get into the house. So it's not, you don't have to come to the table with a bunch of cash. So it's, it doesn't, it used to go a lot farther than it does now, but $10,000 still does take a good chunk out of that, that painful need for cash.
Right. And this is the summary of what happened last year. We completed 41 low mod income home buyers received $10,000, four teachers received 15,000, and one Ogden City firefighter received 20,000. So we had a total of 46 completed and three were underway at the end of the year. So these, all the down payment assistant loans are 0% interest deferred payment. The loans are due on sale when the benefit, when they sell the home. Or if they were to move out and rent the home, it would actually call the loan due. So last year with the 46 completed and three underway, our, our expenditures were 524,231. So that's kind of what the year looked like last year. So our proposal for this year is to increase the amount. So we did have a number of comments from citizens at Farmer's Market, and then we went to Ben Lomond High School Family Night. These are the type of events we go to, and then we received some comments from citizens. Sometimes the spelling and the grammar is not the best, but we tried to keep it exactly how they wrote it, the comments.
So a couple of those comments go to home rehab. And I'm not reading emergency repairs in that. I'm reading buy a house that needs to be kind of fixed up and made for sale like we do in the city. Is this a philosophical shift where it's been determined that we need to assist more people with down payment assistance than we need to renovate homes? And that was one of the questions that you addressed through Steve.
Right.
Earlier today, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, these are just general comments. So we're outreach to people, explaining to them, we're doing down payment assistance, we're doing housing rehab. So they don't really have time to read our program guidelines, but they're just interacting with us and we're just asking them, you like our programs? Give us a comment. What do you think needs to be improved or what, what do you want? And these are the type of comments we get. So they're not really specific to one project or program.
Yeah, and I'm sorry if I wasn't more clear. I just made note of the two comments that were up there around rehab. It seems like this budget shift is moving money away from rehabilitating houses and is more focused on down payment assistance. Am I reading, understanding that correctly?
So, and it's a little strange how we do this, because we know, we have a goal that's not as formal in the beginning of the fiscal year that we strive for 50 per year. The funds aren't available until about now, because those funds are recycled. We, we set it for 25, knowing that when we do amendment, we will do another 25. And so these aren't really pulling away from that rehab program. We're just counting on using the source back in the program. So it's not, it's not taking from the rehab program, if that's what you're asking and plugging it into that. So no, it's not, it's not a shift like that. We consistently use the set amount of funds for the Onanagden program and the rehab one is separate. Not to say that you couldn't do that. I mean, you could do less Onanagden payments and push that into rehab, or if you wanted to do more down payment assistance, but that hasn't been a a shift like you're asking.
Okay, thanks.
So that is our presentation. Any questions about the annual action plan?
All right. Any questions, council member Hire or council member Myers? Go ahead.
That was a big step up for me for just a moment. So yeah, my question is on the help funds. It's a loan for emergency projects that come up in the city. Are those repaid back, that type of a loan? Does that just self, just regenerate the funding? Or, or is it like the others that the payment comes back when the home is sold?
So I can clarify that. So we have two funds that are, two programs that are used for repairs like that. We have the, the help one, and then we have what's called the Emergency Home Repair Program. The Emergency Home Repair is a federally funded program that we're, that would use the funds that we're talking about tonight. Help is, is not federally funded and don't have the same restrictions that we have through the other one. But they both are used for those type of repairs. The way it works, help, the help program is just basically a loan. You make monthly payment on it every month until that's repaid off, or you sell the house and repay it, or whatever it is. The emergency home repair is a, is, we put that off until they actually sell the home, and then that becomes due. And that's a much smaller amount. Usually those are like $5,000 repairs if you're need a emergency repair to your furnace or, you know, something that happens in the winter where it's a true emergency. The other ones are, the help loans are more along lines like, man, just need some help on some exterior improvement on the house. But don't mean that you can't live there.
Water and sewer lines, any of that come into play on either of those?
Yes.
And the help program, the monthly payments go right back into the help line, line item budget. So it's the program income. So it's, it's going back into the program. The emergency home repair also, it's a deferred payment. So it's mostly sewer lines that we do for homeowners, but they have to be low income and own a home. So there's not a lot of applicants that qualify actually, because it's a HUD guideline. But that money also goes back into the CDBG program income once they pay it back. So when they sell the home or if they move out, then it would call the loan due and they pay it back. So it recycles again.
Great program. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. So and then just, just maybe some clarification. Could we, I can't remember, I was trying to look back when we last had you up here talking about the community outreach regarding the federal funding on some of these programs. This is somewhat separate, right? We're just, this is dealing with the current fiscal year, and it's different from that outreach. So just kind of so, so folks are aware that kind of, I don't know.
We are currently in the planning cycle for a new five-year consolidated plan, which will determine the next five years for HUD. So once that plan is adopted, then we become an entitlement, we renew our entitlement status. So we're doing outreach to, like, we're doing events like the Ben Lomond High School or National Night Out or Farmer's Market. Or, and then we'll also meet with community groups like LUPAC and the Weber Morgan Local Homeless Coordinating Committee and the Weber Homeless Trust. We'll, we'll reach out to different organizations and I'll do a presentation just about the basic programs and that we're considering, and most of them are what we're doing now. So, so that's an ongoing process and that will be going on until probably January or February.
But yes, this is just the final year of the past five-year plan. So that's what we're talking about tonight. It's, and they are separate.
That's correct. Thank you for that. Okay. And I think this comes to us next week for action, I believe, right?
Next month.
Or next.
Yeah, we have a 30-day public comment. We have a 30-day public comment period. So our plan will, the amendment will be posted on our website and then the public has 30 days to comment. And then we come back to the public hearing December 17.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Perfect. Thank you so much. All right. Up next, the, the money side of Justin Sorensen's. Justin here. Here it comes. All right. Welcome, Justin.
This will, thank you, Chair. This will be brief because Kathy and Jeremy already talked about the number side. But with, with the annual action plan amendment, there is a separate ordinance for the budget action that goes with it. And so so that change here is illustrated, the increases and decreases as was described by Kathy already to true up the budget to what the annual action plan is. So the overall change to the budget is an increase of 674,100. Are there any questions for me?
Don't think so.
Okay. And again, this comes on December 17th as well with the amendment. So.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right. Next up, we'll invite Sarah Meese to come, our Economic Development Director. And Sarah, as you're coming up, we'll talk about the proposed conveyance of significant, significant parcels from Ogden City to the Ogden Redevelopment Agency at 1820 Washington Boulevard. And then also in our RDA work session item, combining your presentation to talk about the the proposed offer to purchase real estate and acceptance contract. I'm sorry, never mind. About that one. Proposed LTD agreement with the Parkway Group. Sorry. I'm gonna be doing this all night. So just, just be ready for that. Thanks. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, so the project we're here to present tonight is now called the Ogden River's Edge. This is what you might have been familiar with previously is the River Parkway Project. And you all have actually already reviewed a number of items related to this project, but we're back tonight with a couple of updates. Um, as Chair Ritchie said, there's two items we're looking at tonight. One is a conveyance of property from Ogden City to the RDA. And the second is an updated version of an L TDA, a land transfer and development agreement between the RDA and the Parkway Group LLC. Um, so just to give you all a little refresher on this project, this project is just north of the Ogden River on the east side of Washington Boulevard. They're proposing to build 110 market rate residential units in two four-story buildings. The project also includes a small commercial building for a cafe that will be immediately adjacent to the River Parkway Trail. The project also includes, as you can see here, parking for the project as well as that southernmost parking lot, which is dual use that will serve the commercial space as well as the trailhead access. As part of the project, they're also putting in a number of improvements along the Parkway Trail. There'll be new public space built as part of the project as well as some really nice landscape improvements along the trail itself. So this is the long history of steps that have already been taken to help make this project happen, starting with a rezone back in September 2023. Um, the, what's called the Piccadilly property, which is where the Ogden Pioneer Days office used to be, that was also sold to the Parkway Group by the city last, around this time last year. A couple of city properties were conveyed to the RDA. And the RDA also approved a land transfer and development agreement and a participation and incentive agreement with the Parkway Group. So in the time since then, bless you. The RDA has purchased three additional parcels from the Utah Department of Transportation that were necessary to make the project work. And those were purchased using the sale proceeds from our sale of the Piccadilly property. And the items we're describing tonight are the conveyance of additional city properties to the RDA. And then a revised L TDA that includes the additional properties we've purchased from UDOT as well as the properties that would be conveyed from the city to the RDA. Any questions on that before I move forward? I know that's a lot. Okay. All right. So this is also a lot, but this just shows you the properties that are being conveyed as part of the overall project. And I think the, the main thing you need to know about this is that some property has already been acquired by the developer, the Parkway Group. Um, the RDA has purchased those three additional parcels from UDOT, which we're proposing to include in the updated L TDA. And then some property is still owned by the city, and that's what we're proposing to convey to the RDA and then also include in the, in the L TDA. Um, this map is just to show you a little bit more specifically. These are the four Ogden City-owned parcels that would be conveyed to the RDA. There's three small ones to the south, and then a portion of another parcel that kind of runs along the, the River Parkway Trail there. And these would be used to facilitate the development of the, of the Ogden River's Edge project. A couple of other things to note here, some of the property will actually be dedicated back to Ogden City when the subdivision plot for the project is recorded. And that includes a cul-de-sac at the end of River Drive and some additional property that kind of includes the, the Riparian Zone along the west bank of the Ogden River. Okay. So that's everything for the property conveyance. Any questions on that before we move into the L TDA?
Any questions on that? Those are, yeah, I don't think so.
Okay. Great. Um, so as I mentioned at the beginning, the RDA board approved a prior version of the L TDA around this time last year. But it wasn't executed at the time because we had not yet acquired the additional properties from UDOT. So we kind of held off. And now that we've acquired those properties, we wanted to present to you an updated L TDA that includes the UDOT properties. It also includes a revised project description. So the project's been described, been revised just a little bit. It'll be four stories tall instead of five stories tall and 110 units rather than the 115 that was included in the original version of the L TDA. And then the updated version of the L TDA also just describes that certain property will be dedicated to the city when the subdivision plot for the project is recorded.
Are those revisions at the developer's request or at our request or is just mutually?
I would say mutually. We, we knew when this was presented last year that those UDOT properties were in play and that they were really needed to, to build the project as intended. And I think it was just worked out best for both parties to, instead of executing the L TDA and then amending it, we decided to just wait until we had those properties and then present an updated version.
Thank you.
And then you may have seen these renderings last year, but again, this is just to kind of demonstrate why the property conveyance is important for the overall success of the project. So this is a rendering of what the project would look like without the property conveyance. And then here you see what it would look like with the property conveyance. And so instead of the project just kind of stopping with this driveway on the south end, that actually becomes a really nice pedestrian plaza that will be open to residents of the project as well as to members of the public. We get this expanded commercial space, which is intended to be a cafe or other use that will serve our trail users. And then it just allows for additional improvements between this project and the river and the Parkway Trail. There's quite a bit planned as far as other public improvements and landscape improvements that will make that trail experience a lot nicer in that particular section. Um, so that's, that's what we have on that. Happy to take any questions on either the conveyance or the L TDA.
Nope.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Up next, Jared Johnson come up and he'll address this on the conveyance of parcels to, from Ogden City to the Ogden Redevelopment Agency on 18th and Wall and Lincoln Avenue, and then also address the LTD agreement with Lotus.
Well, thank you and good afternoon. Appreciate your time. And I really want to say thanks to council staff, Janine and Glenn for bearing with us through all the last minute changes. We've changed up the process a little bit on how we've, we've been going through this one. And so thank you for your help. And so this also is a two-part. The very first part of it is an action by the Ogden City Council to hold a public hearing. So the administration is requesting that the council hold a public hearing because of the encumbrances, trade, sale, or other items as identified by code of a significant parcel, which is six parcels. You can see in this map right here, the yellowish colors are all owned by Ogden City Corporation and that green sliver that's kind of in the middle is owned by the RDA. And so the request is to hold the public hearing and then potentially have the mayor execute the approval to transfer those properties from Ogden City to the RDA. And then I'll kind of go into the why, if there's any questions on that first part.
Jared, thank you. In the packet, it reads, it identifies two parcels on wall, 12, 127, 14, and 12, 127, 19. But the map doesn't show a 19. There's a 14 and a 21.
On the, you're talking about the parse, the actual parcel IDs?
Yeah.
I. Yeah. Okay. I'll go back in and I'll check the numbers and make sure.
Yeah. So maybe the 14 is the 19. Yeah. The upper one on that particular slide that you've got up is identified as 0014 and the lower one is 0021. But there isn't, there's nothing on the map that reads, that we have in our packet that reads 127, 19.
Okay. I have some other slides, but I'll, I'll go and make sure, check parcel IDs, make sure that they're correct.
Jared, I think also for the record, could you kind of explain the little hiccup on the property on Lincoln? Jared, I think also for the record, could you kind of explain the little hiccup on the property on Lincoln? That back property that shows something different on the county records?
Yeah, you bet. So on the, on the south of the river, that portion right here, um, it kind of shows two parcels. Because the western half of it is showing that it's also can uh, owned by Beehive Storage and part of theirs. Um, but actually, if you go in and do the meets and bounce description, and then we've also verified this through an Alta survey that is actually owned by Ogden City Corporation. And when we went through um, and did the river project, we knew that, like, we've done work, we've had uh, material on that site, like, we've known that's ours. Um, so there is a discrepancy in the county's mapping service um, of. In regards to what actually exists and we have been able to go through and identify that. Okay, um, just a little, another little part of that, just this just kind of shows. Um, if you recall earlier in twenty-four, we updated and amended the Ogden Bend Master Plan. Um, that um. Area right there in the red oval is kind of the area on that plan that we're talking about. So originally before this plan was updated, that actually showed a public park. Um, running up against Wall Avenue and in that area. We, when we did the update on that, we actually uh, changed the location of the park and made it um, contiguous with. The rest of the High Adventure Park that was already there. Um, so now that extends onto the south side. Of the river and continues through there and not kind of separate and standalone by itself over um, on Wall Avenue.
Jared, what's that zoned right now as?
Um, oh goodness, it's mixed use. Um. Oh, I I'm blanking on that. It is a mixed you, it is mixed you zone. Yeah, yeah.
All of it is. So how do we guarantee, I guess we've, we were talking about this in our leadership meeting, how do we, how do we guarantee that it will? Become a park?
So as we go through and do this master plan, it kind of overlays the zoning and it requires that any of the developments and the projects that take place in there have to be. Not only in compliance with the zoning, but they'll have to be in compliance with the the master plan, the intent of the master plan as well. So the master plan goes through and as you see right here, it lays all of this out. Not everything as far as the developed portion um, that gets built, has to be built exactly like that. This isn't saying every building has to be that shape in that location. But it's identifying those uses and um, what has to be there um, as as far as the use stuff goes. And so the open area now where it shows the park, it would identify that as an open area. So if somebody. If if a current property owner, because there are property owners that own that right now that are not us, if they came in and wanted to develop right. Uh, that piece right now, we would tell them it's not in compliance with the master plan. And so I, I'm working on that next section in the middle, but not for tonight. So they could make a series of requests, they could ask to rezone it, they could ask to change the master plan. There is things that they could request to do, all of those things which would come back. They would go through a series of. Uh, planning meetings, planning commission, um, and ultimately would come back to the council again.
So when they purchased the property, what was it zoned as?
Um, most of those.
I guess what I'm asking it ultimately is. We don't own that property, right? We don't own what, where we're going to do that and we want to make it a park. What guarantees us that it can stay as a park? I get the master plan piece, but. I'm not sure that, I mean, we, we've gone against master plans before.
Sure.
How do we, how do we guarantee that it stays open space or whatever, or oh, one, oh, two, or whatever?
Yeah.
Am I saying the right thing?
No, yeah, you are. So open spaces is oh, um. Again, there is no one hundred percent guarantee, however, that is the intent and that is what we are trying to assemble. So all those properties through that center section right now, it's a checkerboard of ownership. Um. The RDA does own properties in there, we just don't own all of them. Um, I have met with the owners of that, they are aware of this plan. Um, they're not necessarily opposed to this. Um, they do have some plans that they want to do, but they are not opposed to this, this overall plan. And um, again, any of those changes would have to come back through all of the legislative bodies for approval.
Maybe along the same lines as that, as 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 Bexer White's question, um, if you go back to the previous slide. Um, that section that, the, that's all owned by Ogden City, correct? There's not any portions that are owned by. Other entities, maybe the the far corner or?
Everything in yellow is owned by the city, the green is the RDA, the other portion on that um. Kind of beyond that top right corner is not, that is private.
And that's where, oh, yeah, the top right corner. Was the intent to build the, like, the original master plan to build the park in that location? Including the the north northeast corner?
Yeah, it it went through that entire area, yes.
And so similarly, we wouldn't necessarily have been able to develop the park without private ownership allowing or selling or.
Yes, we would, we would have to.
Okay.
Okay, so moving into the second part, after the request for the public hearing then goes into uh, the request. Um, for the redevelopment agency board to approve the executive um, director to execute an LEA, which is a land exchange agreement. Um, the reason that it's a land exchange agreement is um, this slide right here is showing. On the east side of Lincoln Avenue, Lotus Development Group actually owns um, two point five acres in there. When you look at the county information and it shows in my little table right there, it shows it as two point four or five. But again, when we did the Alta survey, it actually is two point five four is what it shows in there, so not a huge change, but. There is a little bit of difference in the numbers. Um, this property. Is not as far into the park, although the northern portion of it is, it does contain that. Uh, but also you can see when that uh, master plan was changed, it changed the type of use. So previously Lotus had acquired this property and had submitted. Um, to build a multifamily project right there uh, with the changes in the. The master plan, we've been having discussions with them about how could we. Help fulfill um, what they would like to do, but also help us to start getting that land assemblage and acquiring those properties to try to make these things happen. And so that is why this is happening, um, that we're requesting this land exchange. This is something that's actually been going on with Lotus for um, a couple of years now. This isn't brand new. They had a previous LTD, uh, but it never made it. Um, it never made it to the board for approval. Um, and it is also the reason why the property on Eighteenth and Wall that's owned by the RDA and the city that we're um, we're. Not necessarily going out doing an RFP, we're actually asking you to consider just swapping the property with them because it's helping us fulfill our goal. Um, in the long term and the use that they want to build is compliant out on that corner uh, versus that interior on Lincoln. They would, the the property that we would exchange with them, they would end up with more property than what we get out of the. Um, the exchange, but I kind of want to go through and talk about. Um, why it's still balanced, at least in our view. They would, all seven properties together is just over four acres. They will not receive all four acres. They will end up with approximately about three point five. This is a conceptual plan, this is not approved and it's not something that um, it's not final, we're. They're still engaged with us right now, going through the planning process to work through parking issues. Um, different densities um, and the units and stuff. So right now tentatively, this shows about a hundred and thirty-one multifamily units um, spread out in four buildings. Uh, with a, an amenity building in there as well for them. And then you'll notice on the bottom right. There are six units in there, those are actually slated to be um, townhomes, there are a for-sale product. That was a requirement of that master plan as well, when we updated that, that there had to be a percentage of for-sale product. Um, it's less in this area than it is on the internal portion of that master plan and this would fulfill that requirement. And so um, again, this is not like a final concept, this is just um, presenting the massing and putting together that we can make the project work in there. This is a copy or a, yeah, just a copy of the Alta survey. Um, it just kind of shows a little bit more in depth. Um, you can see the riparian areas of the river and the things that are going through. So part of the land exchange agreement would require that they have to do a subdivision plat. When they do the subdivision plat, the remnant pieces that are on the um, the south side of the northern development. Or the north side of the southern development, those remnant pieces would be deeded back to Ogden City um, and would stay in our ownership. Um, this up here again, although not a final plan, um, we're putting in the design elements, you can kind of see a little bit on that north side of the river. Um, continuing that trail through, which is some of the things that were in the master plan. And there's also um, some other features in there that uh, we're working with them on as well. I do need to note that the land exchange agreement that you have in your packet, there will be some updates, we received some. Information from Legal um, yesterday. Uh, from their side and our side have been still having some discussions and they've made some modifications to that and I will have those over to you quickly. This right here, I just kind of wanted to touch on, there were appraisals on all of these properties. Um, those appraisals are being updated. Um, some of, one of them was about a little over a year old and so we're having those appraisals updated. But this kind of goes through and shows um. That the appraisals for the uses, what those were, it showed that their property appraised for two point six, ours was at two point eight. There's a big portion in here that we need to talk about on the RDA property. Um. I'm gonna kind of jump back here. There is environmental cleanup that is identified and we've known about that and it needs to be done, it has never been done. Um, we've had some estimates done on that. The estimates that we've had identified that to be about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars to do that. We're looking to lessen that cost um, through the design, the way we're placing buildings, uh, parking lot, some of the other features. We're working on that, but right now in the agreement, it goes through and identifies that. Um, that's part of. One of the ish, not the issues, but one of the um. Items to consider as we go through, that's actually a deduction on our property because we haven't done that. There used to be a mechanic, an automotive mechanic shop that was there and so they've identified. Um, lead, oil, uh, different things in the soil and all that needs to be cleaned up. And so Lotus, if this exchange was to go through, um, basically they're doing that, they're doing that um, on their cost. There is a concern, what if the environmental costs exceed the three hundred and sixty thousand? Right now, we've agreed to go with that three hundred and sixty thousand number. There is a clause in the LEA um, that'll talk about. The establishment of a FIS, which is the first um, home investment zone. We are working on putting one of those together. Um, in a different area, but the request is that's in there that if these environmental cleanup costs were to exceed three hundred and sixty thousand. Um, and there was money that was available from the creation of a FIS for this type um, of cleanup. Would they be able to then utilize those funds? Um, ultimately, that is going to be up to you. So if we create the FIS, which we anticipate we will be pursuing and there are funds in there. And they exceed that number, they would have to come back before this body to request additional funds. We can authorize that, that would have to come back to the, to the RDA for approval.
May I ask a question? Maybe you can maybe explain what the FIS, I mean, how does that work if it's in a different area? Or would you also make this area a part of it or how does that work?
Yeah, so the FIS, um, this would, it would probably be part of it. So a FIS is really interesting, it's a new uh, tool that the state created last year. Yeah, and so, um, yeah, so F H I Z, um, and so we uh. We're, we're working on putting the one together. The purpose of that is again, it's a first-time homebuyer investment zone and. But it doesn't, unlike a traditional, um, like a CRA, it doesn't have to be just one contiguous. It can actually be pieces all over the city. And so we've been working and creating a map to identify. All of the different properties that could be um, included in it, that could contribute to it. Um, this would be one of them and they would help to create that increment. Um, and then there's even some outlier portions in it. That are kind of spinoffs where they don't have to be directly related, but um, there could be portions that could be captured that could be helped like on community developments. Projects like the subdivision that we've been talking about up on North Jackson, that could, that could potentially be tied into it. And so it's really unique. Um, I'm still trying to get my head around a lot of it. I've never created one before and. Nobody else has yet either, and so we're uh, we're kind of working through it. But anyway, that's, that's what that paragraph in that agreement is talking about is if that gets created. Um, and there are funds to assist and they exceed those costs. Um, that they could request uh, additional funds um, to help compensate for those. And I think, yeah, I don't know. Gone through a lot of different things, there are some requirements in that LEA as well. Um. They have to have board approval from you. And um, we have to go through our normal due diligence and our closings and things like that. It is a little bit time sensitive, which is why we're kind of pushing quickly. Again, Lotus has been holding on this for quite a while now. Um, and they, some of their credits are potentially set to expire. Um. And they've already had extensions on them and so we're trying to wrap some of that stuff up if, if this is a possibility before then. Um, and they will, so we have closing dates and things in there and then there are follow-up things, so. It can't just, we can't just exchange property and then have nothing happen. There are guarantees by certain dates, they have to do certain things, they have to do the subdivision plat. They'll have to do a formal development agreement. Um, they're aware of that. Um, and I think they're probably pushing harder than we are because they've got some timelines that uh, that we don't necessarily. Um, but all of that is set to, they would potentially, if this was go through and these get traded, they'd be have permits and everything by next spring. They've already been, like I said, they've already been working with our planning staff and starting the processes now to set the groundwork.
So has our staff been able to lead the view of the new L? What is it called? Land Exchange Agreement? Have we been able to look at that?
Yeah, I think Glenn had a chance to look at that.
Um, we got, so we originally had an LTD, which we were able to review. Um, we did get, that was substituted for a land exchange agreement. We got that pretty late on Friday. Um, so we haven't had as much time as we usually get for things like that. Uh, additional changes that Jared had mentioned, I, we haven't seen those yet.
What, a- and I might have missed what Marsha was driving at here and, and what you stated, there are properties within this master plan. That are owned by others currently. And would not be. Can't develop on it if somebody else owns it, right? Other than Lotus. What percentage of the whole chunk? Is not currently in the possession of the city or Lotus for the purposes of. Executing this master plan and developing it in total.
Um, I haven't gone through and done the math to, to calculate out the percentages, but I would say it would be. It's gonna be higher, um, seventy percent plus. Most of this is all private property. Um, and so again, we working with all of the different parties and. There are some parties that are willing and ready to maybe start doing things. There's properties that are identified in this master plan that they have no intention of doing anything at this time. And there's nothing that forces us to require them to do anything. Um, our biggest focus right now. Is working with the parties that have reached out and contacted us, specifically the ones that do own. Property right now, like where we are showing the new park and the open space. And then um, trying to identify, or not trying, we have already identified all the properties that we own and where they're at, where they own. Um, I anticipate that I will likely be back having more conversations with you about. Potential more land exchanges or uh, purchases or um, because that'll be the big part is actually start to try to. The next part will be to secure the park area and then working with the other property owners. Um, to start triggering their developments on their properties. But that is a very true statement. Um, there, there is more property that is privately owned than that we have in here.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions for Jared?
Do we even own the, the rest of the parking lot? Piece or the housing? I guess it's housing and parking in between there. It's hard for us to understand what pieces without having
Yeah, and I couldn't all throw another slide in here. I can show the current ownerships and the breakdowns.
I mean, because it seems like that's a big piece of the puzzle, right, right there. Regardless of the open space.
So you can kind of see right there on the right side of the blue, so Lotus owns that. Child's Avenue still goes through there and, and dead ends right now. And then you have all of those. You know, they used to all be houses that were through there. And again, we, it's, this isn't a hundred percent correct, but like if you went down that row right there, like there'd be three of those would be private and then we own one and then the next two are private and then we own one and and it kind of checkerboard throughout the whole thing right there. And so we're not going to request to like vacate Child's Avenue yet. I mean, there's a lot of things that we're working on, on that land assemblage to start putting all that together. But where that housing portion with the parking lot and stuff that you're referring to in the center about where that yellow oval is. The property that we would exchange for is, you know, only maybe half the west, half of that or a portion of that west side. It's not the, that entire piece. Yeah, this, this was created in two thousand and two. And it's been, so it's, it's been a while and we're trying to pick it up and do what we can. Wouldn't we have opportunities?
I guess from staff's perspective, do we need to, I'm assuming we have it on the docket for
Next week.
Next week. Do we need more time to look at it? I, I mean, I, that's
It depends on when we get it. I mean, they said they'll get it to us by noon tomorrow. If that happens, we can probably get it done. If not, we might want to take a little extra time.
Jared, why are these coming to us like this? Like, why are they so late? Why are we? This is not the first one that's come to us.
Now, this one, this one was a change in kind of how we were doing the process and a lot of questions that came up with what had happened before and where we are now. And so like I said, there was a, an LTDA that was done on this before. But it never came to you for approval and it couldn't be executed in the form that it was in. And also it didn't necessarily compensate for, well, it identified that we would be exchanging the land with Lotus, but the property was never transferred from the city to the RDA. Like it, it couldn't happen in that way. So it was missing the step that, that we actually need to transfer from city to the RDA and even to make that happen. And so there was a lot of different things that were happening. We started with the LTDA. And that's what I had originally had prepared and put in. And then there were questions about that with some of the timelines in there and then the specifics as far as you know, how many units exactly, what was that gonna look like, you know, all the different things and those were, we just, we didn't have we didn't have those answers quite yet. There's, we're still working through a couple of things as far as parking. There are the ability to have some like parking reductions and so we're working through some of those and those are driving some of those different things. Like I said, I asked for the, and they are doing updating the appraisals. We're really hoping to have those updated appraisals for you tonight. Those didn't quite come in like we were hoping. So there's just been a, a series of things and when we shifted quickly from the LTDA to a land exchange agreement to try to help. Because the, this zone and the development already requires a development agreement that has to be approved by administration. They, it already has to be done regardless. And so it was getting a little bit confusing, doing an LTDA and then doing another development agreement on top of that. And so that's when we decided to kind of change the process, split them out, try to clean it up. And then as far as the timing, again, it's trying to help accommodate Lotus's timeframe. They're out of extensions. They've already asked for so many because this has been going on for so long. That the timing just, it kind of started pushing it.
And again, this is, I, I guess it's a bigger question of how many more of these are we gonna see?
Well, hopefully not many more like this as far as
We had anyone just the other day with Lotus.
Riverwalk?
Riverwalk, yeah. So I just, you know, we're it's hard, it's hard on us, it's hard on staff. I mean, we don't even have all the information. We can't ask questions.
So as far as how many are gonna see, I'm, timing wise is what I'm taking that, that you're asking.
Yes.
Yeah, no, we'll, this will help us be better prepared moving forward.
Councilmember Myers?
Yeah, thank you. It appears to me on this conceptual plan, you've got the storage garages that are right on the river scheduled to be common housing as well. Is that correct?
Yeah, they could be at some point in time. There's nothing that dictates that they have to today. There's nothing that requires that property owner to go and change those, tear them down. It's just if they wanted to redevelop their property and they wanted to change it, they would be subject to, these are the uses that, that they would be restricted to.
So there's not any plan in place for them to to vacate their property or any requirement they would, okay, perfect.
Okay. All right, with that, I thought hopefully we'll get that additional information and in good time and we can do the review we need on that before next week. Thanks, Jared. All right, up next, we'll bring Sarah back up to the hot seat. Sarah, to present on the proposed offer to purchase the Forest Service Building.
All right, well, we're, we're very excited to be with you today to present for your consideration the RDA's proposed acquisition of the Forest Service Building. This is a historically significant and beautiful art deco building on Twenty-Fifth Street, just a little bit east of our downtown. Sits within the Nine Rails Creative District in the East Central Community as well. So the Forest Service moved out of this building about two years ago and the building has since been declared surplus property. And the General Services Administration has been working through its process to dispose of the property. And so this has been our, on our radar for a while and we've been studying the project. Really the goals that we have for this building are to make sure that the building is appropriately preserved. And we want to make sure that it's also reused in a way that benefits the community and aligns with the different plans that have already been put in, in place for this area. Because this is such an important building, our team is recommending acquisition is the best route to, to ensure a good outcome for this building. So before we dive into the specifics of the project, I wanted to provide just a little bit of context for why this is something that our redevelopment agency might want to consider. The mission of our RDA is to build on the community's existing assets, including historic and cultural assets. And to invest in underutilized properties. And to do that in a way that really contributes to the community's quality of life as well as the fiscal sustainability of our city. The RDA also tries to prioritize its projects and its project areas based on how well they align with these values. I've highlighted just a couple of here that are relevant to the Forest Service Building project. So the first one there, real estate and land use. The RDA really wants to focus on developing value and density in our downtown core. And that includes job creation and residential growth. We also want to make sure that we're preserving and enhancing our community's historic assets. And then finally, you see there, under social equity and essential services. We also want to make sure that we are increasing access to, to key services, including attainable housing. And then just before we leave the general RDA background. As you all know, tax increment financing is the primary tool that we have for our RDA to be able to complete these, these projects. So essentially what tax increment financing or TIP allows us to do is to put the new tax revenue that a project generates back into the project to make sure that it's financially feasible. This tool is especially helpful for us in an older community like Ogden. Because it can help overcome some of the costs that you have of developing in a, in an older community. So that includes things like upgrades to historic buildings, investments in infrastructure and other things like that. So the Forest Service Building sits within the Adams Community Reinvestment Area. And the vision that was laid out in that project area plan is for a mixed-use neighborhood that helps transition from our downtown core into the adjacent residential area. There are a few specific development objectives that apply here to the Forest Service Building. Including the objective to address vacant or dilapidated buildings, to restore historic assets. And generally to strengthen the, the tax base and the economic health of the neighborhood and the community. So with that background, let's turn to the Forest Service Building in, in particular. As you all know, the building is, is very significant historically. It was built in the nineteen thirties with funding from the Works Progress Administration. And it was designed by noted Ogden architects Leslie Hodgson and Merle McLennahan, who were responsible for so many of the, the iconic buildings that we have here in Ogden. This building is considered one of the best examples of their work and in particular their art deco style. So along with Ogden High School and this municipal building that we're meeting in here today. The Forest Service Building is one of the, the finest examples of their work. The building was listed on the National Register of Historic Places in two thousand and six and it's also listed on our local register. The building's about fifty-three thousand square feet with four floors. A full basement and then three kind of upper levels, penthouse-type levels. The building has been really remarkably well-maintained over the years. But it will require significant renovation, including for certain uses, some seismic upgrades. Complying with preservation requirements and then also developing a creative parking solution because the building has essentially no parking that goes with the property. So we've been working through, working closely with GSA through their disposal process. This process started after the Forest Service moved out of the building and GSA has a very set process that they're required to, to follow on these surplus properties. So we have been working with them on a negotiated sale. Which gives public agencies the opportunity to purchase a property at the fair market appraised value. Before it might go out to a public sale and GSA has indicated to us that generally the negotiated sale results in a lower price to the purchaser than letting it go to a public sale and bidding on it there. So our RDA staff submitted a non-binding notice of interest to GSA on this property. And just this fall, GSA has provided us with an offer to purchase with a purchase price of three point six million dollars. That is about in line with what the county assessor has the property assessed at. They've got it at about three point eight million and GSA's price is sitting at three point six. So we now have an opportunity to review that offer to purchase, which essentially serves as a purchase contract. And if the RDA chooses to proceed with the acquisition, we would need to notify GSA by December sixteenth. By which date we would also need to pay ten percent earnest money. And what happens from there is that GSA takes that and they have to go for a negotiated sale like this. They have to go through congressional review. Which can take three to four months. And then once they complete that and accept our offer, we have another thirty days to close and, and pay the balance of the purchase price. So we took the opportunity, we wanted to make sure that the, the renovation and reuse of this project of this property is really feasible before we commit to acquiring the property. So we actually went ahead and took the step of publishing a request for proposals on, on the property. We let our proposers know that we didn't own the building yet, but we wanted to see what reuse proposals they would come back with. And understand what the financial structure for the project would look like. So in that RFP, we identified certain goals that we have as a city for, for the property. First and foremost being that we want to make sure the building is appropriately restored and rehabilitated. We also indicated that we would be open to either a commercial program or a mixed-use program. And with the commercial space, we were interested in seeing if there are flexible types of workspace that could help our entrepreneurs in small or medium-sized businesses. And then we also saw an opportunity for residential use on the upper floors. In the RFP, we also asked our respondents to address how they would solve the parking for the property. And how they would incorporate publicly visible art, given the, the property's location in the Nine Rails Creative District. Like I mentioned earlier, we also want to make sure that the reuse plan aligns with the plans that have already been adopted for, for this area. And really significantly, we want to make sure that we're avoiding any uses that would be detrimental to the neighborhood. And prevent any extended periods of vacancy. We definitely understand that the longer the building is vacant, the greater the risk is that it could be subject to vandalism or deterioration. So through that process, we received two really strong proposals with different reuse scenarios. We've put together an internal selection committee that's had time to review those proposals. We've met with both respondents and we've done an initial evaluation of the financial feasibility of the two proposals. So our selection committee has kind of an initial recommendation of award. But before we come back to you for a final decision on the acquisition of the building. There is a little bit more work we need to do to really refine the deal structure and put together some initial deal terms for, for you to review and consider as part of that decision. This is just a very high-level slide here, but wanted to outline some of the project sources and uses of funds as we know them today. So as I mentioned, we know that our, the RDA's cost to purchase the property from GSA would be three point six million. We're also assuming that we will have carrying costs before we could convey the property for future development. Right now, GSA is paying about twenty thousand dollars a month to operate and maintain the building in the excellent condition that it is currently. And we want to make sure that we also meet that standard. So we're assuming that we may have twelve to eighteen months of carrying costs for the RDA. And then the project costs that we've seen from the proposal process could range anywhere from about thirteen and a half million to twenty-two and a half million. And that would include the renovation of the building, addressing any needed seismic upgrades and providing for parking. And then with those project costs, we've also been able to model with a little bit more precision what tax increment financing the project would generate. And so based on the numbers that we've reviewed, we expect that the project would generate up to two point seven million dollars in TIF for an all-commercial scenario. Or three point one million for a mixed-use scenario that includes some in, income-targeted housing. And if you all are familiar with the, the CRA project budgets that we put together. There's often a twenty percent allocation for housing that can only be used for income-targeted housing. So that's what makes the TIF available for the mixed-use scenario a little bit higher is because we're able to pull in that twenty percent housing allocation. There are other programs that can also help with the project costs, certainly the preservation tax credits. For certain housing uses, the low-income housing tax credit program may also be available. But what we've really found from, from reviewing the proposals and working with our respondents is that as you see here, the TIF that the project is gonna generate is not quite enough to cover the acquisition costs and carrying cost. So what that tells us is that the RDA would need to sell the property to a developer to cover that gap and not just convey the property at no cost. And we do think that that's a, a workable option based on the proposals that we've reviewed.
May I ask one question?
Yeah.
I apologize, you went on to the next slide before I had a chance, but I'm, I was just curious, so right now, or when the Forest Service was occupying the building. But I was just curious, so right now, or when the Forest Service was occupying the building, there wasn't parking, right? So I guess I'm just curious, like, if it was only commercial development, would there be parking requirements?
There would be. I'll let Barton correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm curious.
I think at least, I won't speak to the zoning code on that, but for a developer that's trying to market the property as commercial space, they would still want to make sure they're providing some parking for the building just to make sure that they can lease the space and make it attractive to potential tenants. And so we've seen all kinds of creative things at that property over the years as far as the Forest Service, working with nearby property owners to provide some parking for their employees. So where we sit at today is our RDA work session here on November 12th. Our next steps from here, like I mentioned, are to really hammer out the deal points with the developer that we're recommending for award. We're not bound to enter into any agreements with them, but we want to see if we can get to a point where we have a feasible deal structure and project to bring back to you on December 3rd, is what we're proposing currently, so that we could have your decision and respond to GSA by their deadline of December 16th. And happy to take any questions.
Questions?
Councilmember Graff?
Yeah, just a couple, and you might have answered one, Sarah. In the packet, I think it talked about TIF money falling short of financing the purchase of the building and the maintenance involved, and that sales tax money might need to be used to supplement the TIF money to complete the financial transaction. But it sounds like you've made the decision that it needs to be sold, and as a result, we'd recuperate.
And we'll talk about the sales tax issue a little bit more relative to the reimbursement resolution that's being proposed tonight. We wouldn't necessarily use sales tax to plug that gap, but it is, in some cases, used as kind of a, pledged as a backstop when we bond against TIF. So in that scenario, it could be brought to bear. But I think when we look at just the overall project sources and uses, that's where we've seen the TIF is not going to, we don't expect the TIF to be enough to cover our costs. And so we understand that we would need to actually sell the building, maybe not at the full price, but at some level to fill that gap.
Okay, thank you. There was reference to hazardous materials, and the statement, I think, from the GSA was, "No hazardous materials have been stored on the property for the last year," were there?
So we have not done a Phase 1 ESA on this building, in part because of the way it's been used primarily as an office building. But that is something that we would encourage if we move forward with a development partner. We would encourage them to do a Phase 1 environmental site assessment to make sure they're understanding those conditions. I think the more likely concern for this building is going to be lead in some of the windows and paint that might be used in the building. And again, that's something they'll need to look at carefully as part of their renovation plan.
So if something that was deemed to be insurmountable and a deal-breaker, that could be discovered in the due diligence period, and then...
It could potentially be discovered in what would be considered their due diligence, but when we pay the 10% earnest money payment to GSA, that's non-refundable. So if GSA backs out after that, we would get our earnest money back. But if we discovered something between that payment and closing that made us decide, "Nope, we're not going to move forward on this," then that earnest money payment would be non-refundable.
Okay, thank you. And then, what is a historic preservation easement? And it indicated that there was a cost associated with that, and what is that cost?
So GSA, because they're a federal agency, they have to comply with certain federal regulations addressing the use of historic properties, the treatment of historic properties. So when GSA conveys this property, whether the RDA purchases it or somebody else buys it, they have to make sure that it's going to be appropriately protected. So they'll only convey it with a preservation easement. And in this case, there's a nonprofit organization called Preservation Utah that would be the holder of that easement. And so when a developer goes to renovate the building, they would need to go through a review process with Preservation Utah to make sure that they're treating the property appropriately. And then there's also a fee associated with having that organization hold the easement because they're incurring cost by doing the review, by monitoring the property to make sure it's treated appropriately. So their fee is based on a percentage of the property value. I think it's around $30,000 or $40,000 based on the initial estimates.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Hare, I don't know if you are online still.
Yeah, I'm here, and the presentations are very comprehensive, so, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I didn't want to forget about you. Can you talk about the process of just allowing it to go on the open market? And what are the risks associated with that? Or would that, you know, would that be a strategy, you know, to feel like we maybe could get it at a better price? Or what are the risks with that?
Yeah, sure thing. So that is definitely something that we've looked at. Kind of from the very beginning, we understood that there's an option for GSA to just sell the property at a public sale. And our assumption is that the renovation costs are going to be significant enough that whoever buys it will likely approach the RDA and request tax increment financing support. So that gives us some ability to influence the outcome. If they approach us and ask for TIF, then we can enter into a participation and incentive agreement with them and include certain requirements as part of that. So that is one option. There is also some protection afforded through the preservation easement that would be, you know, conveyed with the property, even if it were to go to public sale. But I think what has, the risks that have concerned us most are just kind of the unknown. There could be an out-of-state owner that comes in and buys the property that sits on it. And again, that risk of vacancy really concerns us. It's amazing how fast historic buildings can deteriorate when they're not occupied. And we're very fortunate that GSA has maintained the building so well up until this point. But we think there's significant risk that somebody, out of state or otherwise, purchased the property and just sit on it, and the vandalism or deterioration that could happen as a result. I think we also want to make sure that we get a use that really contributes to what we're trying to do in the Nine Rails Creative District and with the Make Ogden Plan. And so we felt that by taking a more proactive role in the future of this building, that we're going to be able to have, ensure that we have a use that really contributes to the neighborhood.
Some question on the carrying costs. The GSA is currently spending $20,000 a month to maintain the building. Is that, have we reviewed what they are doing? And is it something that, as a city, we could take on? Or is there a contracted group that are doing that maintenance? And is that something that we would, what does that look like if we were to purchase the building with those carrying costs?
My understanding is that a portion of it is contracted out. And we've tried to just be conservative and just assume, you know, if we want to maintain it at that standard, we would need to just stick with the cost. But I think there is always a possibility that we could potentially do it for less. We just wanted to be conservative in budgeting for those carrying costs and just assume we would stick with kind of the same regimen that GSA has done.
Any other questions, or...
I just have a comment. I wanted to say how much I really appreciate, I love this building. I spent a lot of time looking at it in my neighborhood. And honestly, I would love to live there one day, but anyway. It's my house, it's quite a burden. But anyway, and I just also want to say how much I appreciate you doing the RFP process to have developers to give proposals. I appreciate it.
Yeah, well, thank you. We were happy to do it. We really felt like, in this instance, we felt like there were multiple proposers that would be very competitive. And we also kind of wanted to see the full range of what creative reuse plans we might get. So we have definitely seen the benefit of going through that process for this project.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. The next item is linked to this, and that is if the decision is to proceed and purchase the building, the funding of that. So we've got Laura Lewis and Nate Robertson here, online maybe, to address this.
Yes, I'm...
Hi, Laura.
Hi. Sorry, I can't be at least on a screen. I'm in Bozeman Airport waiting for a plane to come home. So I'm glad you got to me before 6 o'clock. So I will brief you on the plan for financing if you decide to proceed and the action that you need to take immediately. Will not be near the final action. So what has been contemplated in order to provide you the most flexibility in terms of, you know, potentially selling the building, or, you know, it just gives you the full flexibility. If the RDA does the financing, and we pledge tax increment, and as a backstop, also, there will be a pledge agreement between the city and the RDA to utilize tax increment, should, excuse me, to utilize sales tax, should the tax increment fall short. In that way, then, you know, the bond purchasers will look at it as a sales tax bond, and the city is then taking the risk between the tax increment that might be generated and the actual debt service. We're very cognizant of that. We run numbers with that in mind. But there is, you know, never a guarantee, right, that it's going to come off this that way. We contemplate doing what's called a direct placement as opposed to a public offering, which you have been used to in the past with all of your other issues. Direct placement avails us of usually getting more aggressive call features. So think of this building, if there's a, you know, you buy it, and there's a sale to the developer, you know, for a million and a half dollars, we can use that, those funds, more easily to pay down that portion of the bond, which then would, you know, leave it such that the TIF would be a higher likelihood of paying off the balance of the bond. It just allows us a lot more flexibility than going to the open market. Additionally, it's a small issue. And so to bear the cost of an underwriting, an official statement, and a rating, and all of that would be, you know, cost prohibitive as well. So with that, that is the plan. We usually can get it done a little bit faster because we don't have to get the rating agencies and whatever involved. We did mention this potential and frame just that way to the rating agency. When they were doing, I want to say they were doing a surveillance a couple of months ago, and they, you know, indicated it wouldn't be any, you know, concern to them because of the relatively small dollar amount related to small debt service and the fact that tax increment will cover, you know, a significant portion of it. So let's see, with that, the idea would be that we would structure the transaction with the same maturity as you will be receiving tax increments. And the important thing will be that you will need to adopt a reimbursement resolution. And that will be the only thing that you'll be asked to adopt. I can't remember the timeline, whether it's in two weeks when you meet again, or next week, or whenever. The only thing you'll be asked to adopt immediately because we need to know whether you want to proceed with the transaction before we, you know, start pulling the documents together. And yet, you as a city, if you decide to proceed and pay the earnest money, you're going to want to be reimbursed for that earnest money from bond proceeds. So a reimbursement resolution is basically just something we have to do to, or you have to do to put the IRS on notice that you intend to issue tax-exempt bonds for this so that when they are issued, you can be reimbursed for those monies that you expend today. You know, I mean, I'm not expecting this to happen. Now, I'd say for whatever reason, you pay the earnest money, and it takes, you know, four months to finalize things or whatever. Well, at that point, if we hadn't done the reimbursement resolution, you wouldn't be able to reimburse yourself in those bond proceeds. So that's, I mean, the reimbursement, the language, it reads pretty simple. It's just that you're, you know, putting the IRS on notice that you may issue tax-exempt bonds to reimburse yourself for monies expended before we do the bond issue. If you decide to proceed, we'll be back in front of you at a later date with, you know, it'll be a little bit different, but similar, bond resolutions and documentation for you to, you know, do, set the parameters resolution. You'll have to hold a hearing relative to the sales tax and, you know, more of those standard things. But again, it's a little bit less burdensome because the documentation is a little bit easier with a direct purchase.
Questions for Laura? Before she jumps on a plane? This is, so these...
Don't feel bad, I got 35 minutes, so...
Okay, good deal. So it looks like December 3rd.
You can hit me with a question in a minute if you need.
Yeah. So yeah, these come to us December 3rd for action, both on the agreement to purchase and the intent for reimbursement. Laura, I think in the past, we've asked, maybe you're, as the financial advisor to the city, on the amount of debt related to some of the other projects that we've, you know, Marshall White Center, we've got the Wonder Block, now potentially this item. How, can you comment on how that, or where that puts the city in position for, you know?
I, with the surveillance that the rating agency did last year, I frankly was a little bit concerned because one of the two rating agencies, I think it was Fitch, changed their criteria. And, you know, so through no fault of your own, you've done nothing different. Every time they change criteria, I do a little bit of nail-biting of like, "Oh, my gosh, is this right? Are they going to find something different?" And it was through that process that we let them know that this transaction might be coming heavy on the mind at the time. We still have no idea how you'll vote. But with that, you know, they indicated it would not be, would not be an issue that would cause a downgrade or a negative outlook or anything like that. Now, I will say, I would, you know, I would be quite cautious in terms of moving ahead with any other big debt plans in the next probably year. But I know you have things to tackle at Union Station, maybe at the airport. And I'm speaking specifically related to, you know, debt that would effectively go against your general fund, your sales tax, that kind of thing. Utility bonds are kind of in a different world because they have a dedicated revenue source. But I, you know, would probably caution against doing anything too crazy in the next year until a year, year and a half or so, until Wonder Block really gets underway. We can, you know, point to, you know, revenues coming from the, you know, the parking associated with the Wonder Block and, you know, with the tax increment associated with Wonder Block. So until we can show a little bit of a history of that, I wouldn't do a ton more debt. And if something other small comes up, you know, we'll figure it away. But any gigantic project, I would probably want you to hold off for a year or two years.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or discussion on this? Councilmember Myers?
Yeah, my question would be just to the administration, if they foresee any other investments in the future that they would want to bond. We know that Union Station's on the horizon. If there's anything else that we're thinking of, and then we can weigh and see how we'd like to proceed.
All right. Welcome.
Thank you. I think the next big opportunity for the city, as from my perspective, is with Union Station. You know, of course, things come up. But I think even on the next three-year horizon, Union Station is what I see. Any different?
Have you talked about timing on additional parking structures?
We haven't talked about additional parking structures. That's a really good question, because there are some envisioned for Union Station. So that would be around the same time we'd have to come up with funding. But there's also, I think, some envisioned for, something envisioned for Electric Alley. So that's a good question, and I can talk to CED about what they're thinking. And I can talk to CED about what they're thinking timing wise on that. But I I can't imagine that happening in the next two years.
And that also, that next two years, that also includes potential Union Station development or?
To to do the debt, yeah, to to pull everything together, have them funding stack so you understand, having the repayment source. I I I see it taking a couple of years to to put all of that together with the developer. You have to be kind of far along in the project so that you have a good idea of what the project's gonna cost before you you go into debt. So I I I kind of see the timing on that a couple of years out still.
And I will say, I mean, let's say like the best development on earth lands in your lap, you know, in six months for that project. There always is, where there's a will, there's a way kind of thing. So it's, I I wouldn't want you to think that you absolutely could not do it if we could show, oh, enough tax increment was coming off of it to be self-supporting, for instance. And I'm not saying we could. Let's say whatever, you know, things landed in your lap. There's something we could always look at. We just want to be mindful of issuing with the, you know, with the mindset to not cause a downgrade in your debt. Downgrades are certainly survivable. What it means is existing bondholders, existing bondholders who currently hold, and I'm sorry, I'm working on enough projects, I can't remember all my clients' ratings. But let's assume that you're double A minus, that your, you know, your bonds are double A minus. And if they get downgraded, they would go to an A plus most likely. So those bondholders suddenly have a little bit less value in that bond. Does it hurt you immediately on those outstanding bonds? No, they are fixed rate, whatever. But we'll go into the market then, under that, you know, this fictional scenario, where your rating will be A plus and you would expect to pay a little bit more interest. A plus is still good, it's still investment grade, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not that it couldn't, you know, it's not like, no way on earth we get the debt done. We just want to be mindful of trying to do it if possible in such a way to preserve your ratings.
All right, thank you. Okay, we'll, we'll let you get to your plane early then, Laura. Thank you so much for joining us.
You're very welcome, thank you.
All right, council business, anything on the, from administrator, from Janine, you got?
Yeah, I do have one thing I'd just like to talk with you a little bit about. I've kind of talked to you individually about this, but I just wanted to give you a heads up. Next week, we have currently scheduled Andy Beatles from the Weber County Housing Authority to come and request a resolution allowing the county to exercise their authority in the city. And this is something we've never done before. And it's kind of interesting just what asking questions can can uncover. But after asking a few questions about why we have two housing authorities that are working in the city, Jeremy was able to talk to some people who pointed him towards this state code that basically says if a housing, a county housing authority wants to do work in a city, they need to get a resolution authorized by the governing body, which in this case, City Council, finding that there is a need for the work that they're doing. And the reason I think everyone's missed it is because this this requirement is set forth in the definitions of the code. And it's at Utah State Code 35A-8-401, in case anybody online is interested in looking that up. So when we became aware of that, we notified the housing authority of this requirement because right now there is a house, a a project that has been approved by the Planning Commission. It was approved on August 7th, 2024. So if anybody's interested, they can pull that Planning Commission meeting up and find the packet on it. It's for a permanent supportive housing project at 23rd and Madison. So when we found out about this project, we, I, the city attorneys, I asked the city attorney's office to send Weber County Housing Authority a letter notifying them of this requirement. And so they were willing to comply and they had their county attorney draft up a resolution. And they submitted that to this, to the city on November 4th. And since that time, City Attorney's Office took a look at it, made some minor changes, nothing substantive, put it in the city's format, that resolution. And I think I sent a copy of, a draft of that to you last week with the notes. So next week, we have it scheduled for Andy Beatles to come. I would be the, make the presentation about the resolution and the requirements itself. And then she could speak to the project. So I wanted to make sure that you're all aware that's happening. I knew that Sean was going to be out and I was reminded that Angela is also going to be out next week. So I just want, maybe, you know, you can have some discussion about the timing. If you want to leave it on there, knowing that we're going to be down a couple of council members or if you would like me to contact Weber County Housing Authority and see if they'd like to move it so that the full council would have an opportunity to vote on it. I I believe that she's been also contacting you individually to kind of talk through the project. Rich, sorry, did you?
Yeah, Janine, I I didn't read that new resolution with any degree of detail. But it sounds like, and you can correct me, that if we allow them to function in our jurisdiction, that's not on a project by project basis, that's just, just in general, is that correct?
No, it is on a project by project basis. So if you authorize this, if you adopted this resolution, authorizing them to do the work, specific project at 23rd and Madison. So if they ever wanted to do another project in the city, they would also have to come back to the city and request another adoption of a resolution, authorizing them to do that project in the city. In this case, because we were late to finding out about this, we're kind of, we did it backwards a little bit because they'd already been working on the project for probably over a year, working with planning, the planning department to to come into clients with some of the zoning requirements. So now that they know, I think going forward, they will know that they should do this, come to the council before they start working on any projects in the city.
Okay. I I don't know if I heard correctly, but I just trying to understand the 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 statute says that the governing body makes the determination. But was there a factor on that based on the the need in the community? Or or what was the, what was the verbiage of the issue?
So the language says, I need a resolution adopted by the governing body, which is established and authorized to exercise its powers in the city, declaring that there is a need for the county authority to exercise its powers within that city. So Ogden City has a housing authority and they do similar projects. And so Ogden Housing Authority has the right to work in in the city without a project by project, a doc.
Resolution.
Resolution, right, because they are here. So I think we are the only city in the county that has a city housing authority. But if the county needed to go to other cities, they would also need to
To do that.
get authority from those cities to work in their, in their city.
Can I bring up one other point that maybe I'd like to get some answers for? I I know that when this, this 23rd Madison project kind of came to light, there were a few of us council members that had some concerns about that. And as we approached the Weber Housing Authority, they seemed to be unyielding to our concerns. We started poking around and discovered that there was only one other conflict in the, in the state where a county and a city within that county has a housing authority. And that's in in Utah County. And they have.
It's Salt Lake County, I think.
Hello?
Yeah, you faded for a second, we got you back.
You got me back, okay. So in in Utah County, and they have an MOU between those two jurisdictions that says that they won't, you know, the county won't do projects within the city's housing authority's jurisdiction. And so we started to kind of look into, see if that was something that that would work for us. And I don't know where that is. Somebody in the administration probably has some knowledge of that.
Yeah, so we, the city does have seats on the board of Ogden Housing Authority. And they, Jeremy Smith, took this idea to the board. And they, interestingly, Ogden Housing Authority didn't know they were limited to working in Ogden City. And so they were reluctant to, maybe reluctance is too strong of a word, but they were questioning whether it would be a good idea for the housing authority to enter into those MOUs because they do have similar missions. They share housing vouchers that come to, come to us through the, you know, from the federal government. And so in the past, they've always been very cooperative about sharing and not worrying about, you know, where those housing vouchers go. So that, it, I I'm not sure exactly, obviously I wasn't in those discussions, but that's what was been reported to me, that there was just some concern about an agreement like that.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the insight.
So for the two traveling council members, next week, what, do you have a preference on maybe delaying that presentation into December? So that you can be part of the discussion?
Well, I'd always appreciate that, but I also support the wisdom of everyone on this council. So I'm, I'm okay if you proceed with it.
And if there's any time constraints to the request, I mean, they, I know, obviously, they've been working on the project for a long time, so.
Yeah, I I mean, I would have to, I would certainly give Weber County Housing Authority an option, right? I mean, I just wanted to to see, you know, right now, it's been on the calendar for a few weeks for the 19th and just wanted to see how you felt about moving it.
And my understanding too is that Ogden Housing Authority is writing a letter of support for it. So I just, I don't know, you know, if that impacts, you know, any decisions about it or not.
Jeremy, do you want to, just like, just kind of, do you want to talk about that maybe?
So I I am on full disclosure on the Ogden Housing Authority Board. And so we did have, in my discussions, just with a couple of, with the director and some of those other board members, right now, they're not ready to give support or rejection either way. They are looking more towards, I would say, towards the City Council here to really state how they feel and then go from there. They don't want to be the ones that are deciding. Because I I think the way the ordinance sets it up is that they have to do, get permission from both City Council and the Ogden Housing Authority. So they they haven't had a chance to review anything. They haven't met with Andy, they haven't seen any resolutions or any, haven't had any discussions, at least formally. So right now, I think it'd be premature to say that they are getting or putting a letter forward. That doesn't mean that they won't, it's just not, I wouldn't say that that's.
Yeah, and I did.
Wouldn't act on that.
Mention that, that they also need, the county also needs authorization from the city housing authority to do the project.
And I just have a question regarding that. So would that just be a presentation to the work in the work session? Or that be?
It's gonna be, it's something you have to vote on. And so it will, it will be on an agenda, whether it's next week or or the, on the 3rd for consideration, so.
Okay, I think that'll give us something to talk about tomorrow, huh? In our leadership, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other council business? All right, with that, we'll be adjourned until our 6:00 PM regular City Council meeting, special City Council meeting.